We'll first have invocation by Chaplain Dennis Stampler of Blue Ridge Healthcare, and then pledge of allegiance by Valdez Elementary School Student Council. Kristi Aberdathie is the principal there, so if you'll stand, please, and remain standing through the pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the blessings of life together in this community. We thank you for the beauty and peace in which we live, for the abundance of resources which you have given us, and the safety and security which we enjoy. Almighty God bless those who hold office in government in this great country, this great state, and this great community. Guide and uphold him, strengthen and encourage them as they make important decisions that affect us all. We ask your blessings upon all our citizens, where they live and where they work. We ask that you will bless this community to grow and to prosper and provide opportunities for all. Strengthen the ties of mutual concern and respect that form our life together, Lord. And, Lord, especially at this wonderful Christmas season, may we all find room in our hearts for your peace and your hope and your love. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll stand there, how about a round of applause? Before we move to item four, Troy Hauser is resigning and retiring for the fourth time. Troy, is that how many times you're retiring? And we have a new representative from WMNC, and her name is Allison Asbell. Would you like to stand up so everybody can see you? Item number four is approval of minutes and meetings. You have four listed, October the fifteenth to twenty-second, November the fifth for pre-agenda, and the fifth for recess work session.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no additions or deletions, everybody who was present, I guess, I'll be happy to make the motion to approve those minutes as printed.
All four of them with one vote?
Yes.
Gentlemen, have a correction, additions, subtraction? All those in favor of approving all four, please raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Item number five is organization of the board and the election of the chairman. I'll turn it over to our county manager, Brian Steen.
Thank you. We need to have a nomination for a chairman of the board.
Mr. Acting Chairman, I would place the nomination Johnny Carswell as our chairman for 2014.
Are there any others? Being none, move forward with acclamation?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman? Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Quite unexpected, I can tell you that. I'll defer to later to make some comments if that's okay with the board.
We do need to go ahead and have you raise your right hand by acclamation to make this final then.
Yeah.
By vote?
Want to change seats?
No. At this time, we'll move for nominations for the election of vice chairman. The floor is now open for nominations for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would put Maynard Taylor as a nomination for the vice chairman. I just want to say, I think you guys did a great job this last year representing the Board of Commissioners with the schools and the different groups that you've, you know, that we deal with and whatever. I think you both did a great job.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing done, there's a motion to elect Maynard Taylor as the vice chairman of the Burke County Board of Commissioners for 2014 by acclamation. Please show that by the uplifted right hand. By acclamation, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the appointment of the county attorney and the county tax attorney. So I'm going to open the floor for the nominations for county attorney.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I would put in nomination J.R. Simpson as our county attorney for 2014.
Are there any other nominations? None, I'm going to close the floor for nominations, and a motion is to appoint Mr. J.R. Simpson as the county attorney for the Burke County Board of Commissioners for 2014. Be shown by the uplifting of the right hand for J.R. Simpson. That is by unanimous. Mr. Simpson, would you like to say a word?
No, thank you.
I'll open the floor now for nominations for the county tax attorney.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to place the name of Redmond Dill in nomination as our tax attorney, and I think if you all have looked back this week and looked at the different documents that came out of the tax office and whatever, it's just been a natural for Redmond to do that. It's just come so easy for him, and of course, he's moved his office now right, almost right close to the courthouse, but I place his name in nomination for our tax attorney.
Okay, the name of Redmond Dill has been placed in nomination. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate the Simpson Law Firm in Morganton to be a tax attorney for the coming year, 2014.
It'd be the J.R. Simpson Law Firm?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to make a nomination, but at some point, I think we ought to let that out for B, as just as food for thought, I think we ought to.
If there are no other nominations, I'll close the floor for nominations. There are two names. The first name would be Mr. Redmond Dill. All of those in favor of Mr. Redmond Dill, please raise your right hand. That would be two. Madam Clerk, all of those in favor of the Simpson Law Firm will raise your right hand. That would be three. Our next item of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll take pleasure of the board on that.
Chairman, I move the agenda to be approved as amended.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next item of business is number seven, our presentations. Our first presentation will be a recognition of Mr. Jeff Lovett for service on the council of aging, and that will be presented by Ms. Kathy Pritchard, Chair of the council. Ms. Pritchard, if you'll move to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the council on aging, I would like to thank Jeff Lovett for ten years of dedicated service as a member of the Burke County Council on Aging. Jeff serves as a pastor of the Morganton Church of Christ. He has spoken in youth rallies, college retreats, and gospel meetings in several states. Jeff regards the issues of the older citizens of Burke County with utmost importance. Jeff is to be commended for his dedicated service to the board, to the council, as he was always in attendance, and he was very interested in all our decisions and the monies that we designate for services for the aging of Burke County. I'd like to ask Jeff to come up, and I'm going to present a plaque to him. Jeff, this plaque reads, "The Burke County Board of Commissioners hereby expresses its sincere appreciation, Jeff Lovett, in recognition of ten years of dedicated services as a member of the Burke County Council on Aging. This is seventeenth day of December, 2013." Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Lovett, would you like to say anything to the board? Please, please take a moment if you'd like to.
I'm just glad to be a servant anywhere I can to the community. I'm not a native here, but I've grown to love this town very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, on behalf of the board. Our second item for presentation will be the presentation of the new North Carolina Forest Service County Ranger, and that will be presented by Hunter Burkhead, North Carolina Forest Service District Forester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Steen. I'd certainly hoped to be here before now, but as you all probably are well aware, sometimes the wheels in Raleigh turn sort of slow. But I am honored and privileged to be here tonight to present to you the new county ranger, Chris Moss. Now, Chris was born here in Burke County, but then he moved with his family to the southern central part of the state where he was raised. And then he graduated from Montgomery Community College, received his associate's degree in forest management technology in 2001. He worked for a couple of private forest entities until 2003, and then in March of 2003, he began his career right here with the North Carolina Forest Service. For the past ten-plus years, I think he's done a very admirable job here for the citizens of Burke County. Burke County is now his home, and it gives me a great pleasure and privilege to present to you the new North Carolina Forest Service Burke County Ranger, Mr. Chris Moss.
Thank you, Hunter. Like I said, my name is Chris Moss. I've been in Burke Camp for about ten years now as an assistant county ranger. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with Burke County and its citizens. We've always appreciated the support of the county for our office, and I look forward to serving many more years as county ranger, servicing the county and the citizens of Burke County. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. On behalf of the board, we want to welcome you, and we expect good things out of you. Okay? Thank you, Chris. Moving to item number eight on the agenda is our scheduled public hearings. Hearing number one is the Community Development Department, zoning amendments, ZMA 21305, and public hearing, and that will be presented by Scott Carpenter, our planning director. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and if I don't get to see you before January 1st, I want to wish you, everybody, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and many blessings in the new year. And I've enjoyed working here this year with you all, and I've had a good time, so thanks for being there and standing by me. Tonight I have one item for your consideration, and that's a rezoning request. This rezoning request is from Gary Dyer, and Gary bought a piece of property on Eiker Church of God Road, and it turns out that when he purchased that property, he thought that it was zoned light industrial. Turns out that the property was actually zoned general business, and they own an existing business on a property just south of this parcel. So they have an existing tool business and a manufacturing and a sharpening business. So when they came in to get permits, we had to instruct them that the property needed to be rezoned to light industrial. Even though this property's been used in the past for industrial purposes, it had sat vacant for over a twelve-month period of time, and so it loses its grandfather standing for those types of uses, and it needs to be rezoned to light industrial. So this parcel of land is located at 3202 Eiker Church of God Road, also identified as PIN number 276-267-0883 for the record. The parcel is 4.92 acres, and the request is to rezone it from general business, GB, to light industrial, LI, in order to allow for the existing business to expand. The existing structure on that parcel is 35,236 square feet, so it's quite a large structure. It's in an area that has a mix of land uses around it, including residential, some commercial, as well as some industrial. The adjoining parcels to the west are vacant, and they're zoned industrial and R2. To the north is a single-family home, and it's zoned residential 2. One adjoining parcel to the south is zoned industrial, and it has an existing tooling business located on it already. And there is a, the son, Chris Dyer, is here also tonight, so you can ask him questions if you have any. When I'm done, he can address the board. The other southern adjoining parcel is zoned R2, and the parcels east and across Eiker Church of God Road are zoned R2 as well. We have not had anybody contact the office regarding this rezoning. We did have a planning board hearing on this, and they voted unanimously to ask you gentlemen to recommend approval of this rezoning request. This property is currently served by septic system and public water, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Scott, for your presentation. Madam Clerk, I'm going to open the public hearing for ZMA 2013-05. Is there anyone here to speak for or against ZMA 201305? Yes, you do, please, sir. If you will come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's Chris Dyer. I'm vice president and co-owner of H3D Tool Corporation and Carolina Specialty Tools, which is the property adjacent to the piece of property that we've just purchased. You know, we purchased Carolina Specialty Tools almost 24 months ago. The business is a similar or mirror business to what we have in Ohio. We knew the Weaver family when they owned the business, but, you know, over time, you know, they had continued to lose money for two or three straight years and was very near bankruptcy when we purchased the company. In less than two years, we've already turned the company around, we're already showing a profit, and we're already out of room in the current structure. So we immediately started looking around in the Hickory area for additional square footage to expand and add additional jobs. We, one day leaving, noticed that there was a building directly next to the building that we're in, and that it sat vacant, and we started, you know, looking into it. Bottom line, we ended up purchasing the building from the person, from the original owner, and they had already had industrial, you know, industrial things in that business, so we didn't even think twice that it wasn't zoned, again, for light industrial. And again, because the building that we're in, adjacent, is adjacent to it, it's industrial. So anyway, bottom line is, we asked for your guys' consideration to, you know, rezone it so we can, you know, move our business into that building, add additional jobs, and, you know, basically not have to look elsewhere, you know, outside of Burke County. We want to keep all of our employees, they're all great people, and we want to, you know, keep them, you know, same county that they're working in now, not have any hardships for them traveling. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else here to speak on the issue? If not, Madam Clerk, I'm going to close the public hearing. Chris, if you'll hang real close there, and I'm going to open the floor up for discussion or questions to Chris and/or Scott, the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick, Mr. Dyer, if you will.
Yes.
You mentioned add more jobs. Is there a number out there and a timetable for that number?
I mean, initially, you know, we've actually already, we've actually already in the last 12 months have added five additional jobs, and over the next, really, we currently have approximately 40 employees at this location. Our plans over the next five years are to, is really to double the capacity that we are currently, you know, currently in, in this building. So, you know, I'm hoping, you know, over the next five years that we, you know, we add another at least 20 positions, if not 30.
Well, from what I hear, you're a very good corporate business citizen, so we appreciate you being there.
Oh, thank you.
We appreciate you growing your company and growing jobs for Burke County.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Well, it's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance pending the Burke County zoning map that relates to ZMA 201305. I would further move the following statement of zoning consensus. Amendment to the official zoning map is consistent with the I-40 Florida plan in Burke County zoning ordinance, which encourages economic development along the I-40 corridor. Amendment also provides for existing manufacturing facility under the correct zoning district.
Thank you, Jeff. You've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hands. That'll be unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you both. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Our second item is a closeout public hearing for CD, excuse me, CDBG Scattered Site Housing Project Number TNC 2164, and approval of closeout documentation. That will be presented by Lisa Hilton with COG. Thank you, ma'am. Good to see you.
Good to see you. This is a required closeout public hearing for the 2010 Community Development Block Scattered Site Housing Program. We were very successful with this program. All the homeowners were really excited about getting their work done on their house, and their houses looked really great, and we have before and after pictures, so that's always interesting to see those pictures. We rehabilitated six homes benefiting very low and low-income persons, and then with our emergency repair portion of the project, we repaired 10 homes, and those were also very low and low-income persons. The budget for, we spent, in the rehab budget, we spent $279,753,000. The urgent repair program, we spent $40,000. Planning, we spent $7,000. In administration, we spent $30,881,000, for a total of $357,553.81. The total grant was $400,000, and we had enough to do another house, but we just ran out of time, so we will have to deobligate that funding.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, for that overview. Madam Clerk, I now open the public hearing for the Scattered Site Housing Project Number TNC 2164. Is anyone here to speak to this issue? Madam Clerk will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for Lisa? Hearing no questions, well, it's a pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this grant closeout, GDBGSBEA.
Now, we've heard the motion by Maynard. All in favor, please, excuse me. Which one was it?
We need the CDBG one. Page 92.
Oh, I flipped over one, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
I still make the motion that we approve it.
To approve the closeout documents for Project TNC 2164 and deobligate the remaining funds of 42,446.16.
Page 92.
Yeah, 2164, yeah. Number TNC 2164.
Has the chairman authorized to execute the documents on behalf of the board?
There's two more portions of that. You get to deobligate the remaining funds of $42,446.16 and authorize the chairman to execute, or the manager to execute the documents on behalf of the board.
Yeah. Well, I wanted to keep the 42.
Oh, did you? Okay, there I go.
No, I was going to ask that question, Johnny, and I flipped over, I was looking at the next item, but is there no way that you can assure that we can resubmit or take that money and utilize it?
The time, the time for the grant is up, so we have to give it back.
Okay. All right, deobligate the remaining funds of 42,446.16 and 16 cents. Has authorized the chairman to execute the documents on behalf of this board.
Thank you, Maynard. Now we've all heard the motion, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Item number three in our public hearings will be the closeout public hearing for CDBG SBEA Project Number 11C2333-2333, and that's going to be presented by Sherri Long with Community Development Director.
Get two for one tonight with a COG. Good night and good evening, Chairman and members of the board. We're here tonight to discuss the Community Development Block Grant that we provided the Small Business Entrepreneurial Program to Fitzgerald Nurseries. As you are aware, that grant was funded last, late last summer. Fitzgerald Nurseries has done an excellent job. They've hired the 10 employees that they pledged to do so. We have spent all the Community Development Block grant money for the equipment. He purchased five pieces of equipment to help him in his, in his growing and harvesting needs. We provided $5,000 to the Burke Economic Development for their assistance in small business entrepreneurship, and we paid the administration, and we still have a few administrative bills to pay. Thought the public hearing tonight is to inform the citizens that the grant has been substantially completed, and we're asking the board tonight to approve us to be able to go forward to close this project out a year ahead of schedule. So it's nice to have one that's on the, on the good side instead of on the slow side with this one, and it really was a great project, the business. Fitzgerald Nurseries, if you might, may or may not know, is a third-generation Burke County business. They've got grandsons now working in the business, and so it's a, it's a great local business that employs approximately 45 people, and it spends its money in Burke County. It owns about 800 acres of farmland that it actually grows and harvests trees on. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have concerning the project itself or the Small Business Entrepreneurial Program in general.
Thank you for that overview, Sherri. I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam Chairman, is anyone here to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, I see we have no motion on this one. Are we approaching paperwork or something?
Do we have any closeout documentation?
We're just asking the board to authorize the chairman to proceed with closeout, signing the closeout documentation once all the paperwork is completed.
It says approval is recommended, but if you're going to close the public hearing...
Well, I've only got closed the public hearing, I don't have anything else for the motion.
We don't actually have the paperwork itself because we couldn't close, we couldn't spend all the administrative funds because we paid for the ad for the public hearing. And so what we, the public hearing is required, you can hold the public hearing at any time before you close the project out. You don't have to have spent all the money. Since we're a year and a half ahead of schedule, we ran the ad together so that we could cover the expenses and it not be a cost of the, of the Community Development Department. We are closing, in the process of closing the public hearing, are spending the last bit of money and should have it all spent by the end of January.
All right, so are you going to come back in February, and we'll do the official closeout, then?
No, this is actually, we're substantially closed now, and so the board can authorize submission of the documentation as soon as the last checks are spent.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
What's your recommendation, Mr. Manager?
Well, I'd just like to come back once it's finished and then submit the documents that need to be executed and have the board formally act on that at that point in time.
Sherri, I'm going to ask you to get with the county manager unless finalized, have that process.
We could actually, if you'll authorize to proceed with closeout documentation, and what I can do is, once the final check is cut, I can get all the documentation to the manager, and he can put it on the agenda or the consent agenda, and then that way you can authorize it. We've got a year and a half to close the project out, so we're, we're in really good shape on time.
Mr. Chairman, your recommendations is approval is recommended on...
But we don't have the documentation we need for a motion. We are approving what she has presented on the overview, but it's...
It's just completing the required public hearing for it, but until she gets the final checks cut and then brings the other documents back for the formal closeout for the board to make a formal motion at that time.
Everybody understand? All right, thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number nine is our informal public comments. Madam Clerk, anybody sign up?
I do not have any cards, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item number 10, which is our consent agenda, which is kind of healthy tonight. We'll turn that over to our county manager, Brian Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It appears we have 16 items on the consent agenda. First is BE, I'm sorry, BCECC, Communication Systems Agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated. Item number two, clerk, acceptance of CDBG progress reports submitted by Western Piedmont Council of Government. Item three, clerk... Item three, clerk, adoption of resolution establishing the board's meeting schedule for 2014. Item four is from the clerk, appointments, reappointments, removal to the Board of Health. This is revised. Item five, clerk, appointment, reappointment, removals to the Library Board of Trustees. Item six, clerk, appointments, reappointments, removal from the Council of Aging. Item seven, from the clerk, reappointments to the Tourism Development Authority. Item eight, county manager, written exemption of particular architectural engineering and surveying contracts is authorized by GS 143-64.32. Item nine is general services, request for exemption of VOC from state policy of seeking requests for qualifications for architectural, engineering, surveying, and construction management at risk services in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-64.32 for engineering work on closed landfills and reaffirmation, ratification of appropriation of $9,200 to West Consultants. Item 10 is general services, renewal of use agreement with USDA slash animal and plant health inspection services slash wildlife services. Item 11, tax office EMS collections report for October 2013. Item 12, tax office release and refund report for October 2013. Item 13, tax office tax collections report for October 2013. Item 14, Western Piedmont Council of Government amended uniform RPO memorandum of understanding. Item 15, clerk, appointment to nursing home community advisory committee. And item 16, county manager, resolution certificate of appreciation for Suzette Bradshaw, Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority slash Greenway Public Transportation. Mr. Chairman, that concludes your consent agenda items.
Thank you, Brian. You've heard the consent agenda from the county manager. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Have a motion by Wayne. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Move us down to item number 11. That'll be items for decision. And our item number one is our Blue Ridge Community Action Community Service Block Grant for fiscal years 1415, and that's going to be presented by Mary Wright from Blue Ridge Community Action. Hey, Mary.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Community Service Block Grant is a continuation grant operated by Blue Ridge Community Action. The grant funding comes from the Department of Health and Human Services, the Office of Economic Opportunity. The grant period is July 1, 2014, through June 30 of 2015. The service area for the grant is Burke, Caldwell, and Rutherford Counties. The grant amount is $579,079, of that 36% or $212,910 is allocated to serve low-income families in Burke County. The grant will serve a total of 260 families in the three-county area. The goal of the program is to reduce barriers that adversely affect living conditions of low-income families by providing information and referral, access to needed human services, and case management. We are proposing two programs with this grant funding. The one is information and referral. The objective of this project is to form and inform and educate 200 low-income families about local human services assistance program, providing assistance and applying for services and following up to assure that the clients receive the services to which they were referred. The second project in this grant is to provide intensive case management for low-income families to work with them through job readiness, job search, employment, and educational opportunities that will enable these families to become self-sufficient and move above the poverty level. And moving above the poverty level, that means that they will not be dependent on government subsidies. Through this program, we plan to move 10 families out of poverty by June 30 of 2015. Program regulations require the submission of this grant application to the county commissioners for acknowledgement and review 30 days prior of submission to the Office of Economic Opportunity. This grant submission is due January 31, 2014.
Thank you, Mary. Any of the commissioners have any questions or comments for Mary? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I move to formally acknowledge receipt of the Blue Ridge Community Action Community Service Block Grant application for fiscal year 2014-15.
All right. Everyone's heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Our next item will be appointment to the Burke County Planning Board. That will be presented by K. John, the clerk, to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Burke County Planning Board currently has a vacancy. This seat is for a West representative. The West townships include Jonas Ridge, Upper and Lower Creek, Linville, Silver Creek, Quaker Meadows, and Morganton. An application was received from Tim Barnesback, who resides in the Quaker Meadows Township. Another application was received from Alan Shoal, a resident of the Linville Township. And we are very fortunate. We have three applications for your consideration. Joey Moll, a resident of the Morganton Township, has also applied for this seat. The term of appointment is for three years.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have three names in front of us, Tim Barnesback, Alan Shoal, or Joey Moll. I think we'll take these in order. All in favor of appointing Tim Barnesback, please signify by raising your right hand. All in favor of appointing Alan Shoal, please signify by raising your right hand. It'll be 5-0. So I will not call the third name since that was unanimous. Our second item for decision is appointment to the Region E Development Corporation. That will also be presented by K. John, clerk, to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Region E Development Corporation, which operates out of the offices of Western Piedmont Council of Governments and serves as a resource to help secure financing for small business growth and development, has a couple seats with vacancies. Their activities are primarily focused on helping small businesses access loans to the United States Small Business Administration. The county commissioners of the Uni4 Counties appoint a 25-member corporate membership. An eight-member Board of Directors is self-elected annually from the membership, and the membership meets annually, and the Board of Directors meets quarterly. The terms are for three years. For the economic...pardon me, for the government economic development seat, we have one applicant, Hope Hopkins. And for the financial institution seat, we have two applicants, Russell Spree and Earl B. Cersey III.
For the Region E Development Commission to fill the government economic development seat for a three-year term, we only have one applicant. That'd be Hope Hopkins. All in favor of Hope, please signify by raising your right hand. It'll be 5-0, Madam Clerk. For the Region E Development to fill the financial institution, we have two nominees. I'll take the first one, Mr. Russell Spree. All in favor of Russell Spree, raise your right hand. That is three. And all in favor of Earl Cersey III is one. So that would be Mr. Russell Spree, Madam Clerk.
You're going to three to one. You need a four to one.
I'm going to abstain. Our next item for decision is general services, selection of the engineering firm for the Hannah Street CDBG project, and that will be presented by Carson Fisher, our General Service Director, county engineer. Carson?
Thank you, Chairman Carswell, members of the board. Request for qualifications for engineering services was posted on state IPS website and the county website as required. Interested parties were to submit their responses to my office by Thursday, December 12 at 5:00 p.m. Six firms responded, and those firms are as follows. Altamout Environmental Inc. out of Asheville. Hobbs Up Church Associates out of Southern Pines. J.C. Waller and Associates out of Greensboro. Stimel Associates out of Winston-Salem. West Consultants from here in Morganton. And the Wooton Company from Hickory, North Carolina. Just some of the things that I reviewed and made note of during the review of these requests for qualifications. Can't speak tonight. Several of the firms had very little or no CDBG experience listed. One firm had actually the city of Morganton seal and a number of references in their request for qualifications throughout their response. And of course, this is with Burke County, not city of Morganton. And one firm is about 170 miles from our office, which is not very efficient when having to come to the site. Two firms that would be considered local do both have CDBG experience. However, one of those firms has most of its CDBG experience in the eastern part of the state, and none were listed in our particular area. As a result, my recommendation would be that West Consultants here in Morganton be selected as the engineer for the CDBG project. They have completed many projects, including CDBG projects for the county, and we are also very familiar with their work and their results. So if you would have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Do you have any questions for Carson?
Mr. Chairman, just one. Carson, in these qualifications, you're selecting one, but none of them have yet to give you a bid of what the cost would be. Is that correct?
That is correct. Requests for qualifications typically do not ask for price. You can't ask for unit price or rate information, which we did do, but there's been no discussion about the project itself. And in fact, I believe the way that the motion is indicated for the agenda item is to authorize the county manager and/or the county attorney to negotiate a contract with West Consultants and, secondly, authorize the manager to execute that agreement on behalf of the board, subject to the review and/or revision of the county attorney.
Is there an estimate, you know, the $333,000?
They're included in the application. I don't recall what the exact number was, but there was an estimate included for the engineering services in that actual estimate and application. So I'm sure that we will use that as a guideline for negotiating that contract.
You said all the consultant costs were included in that awarded $333,350?
Yes, both.
But if that comes in exceptionally high, will you relit that bid?
Or will you... I think we'll certainly take that into account during the negotiation and take the necessary step if that is the case going forward. The grant funding does cover both the administration of the project, which will be done by Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and then the engineering, which we are presenting tonight.
Any other questions?
Johnny, just a way of explanation. I think it'd be well if you...this will end up being Ikerd Township property when it's completed. Is that correct?
Actually, and I'm glad you mentioned that, this is a combination project. Ikerd Township Water Corporation does own the water lines in the area. We are actually going to be upgrading an older two-inch galvanize to newer six with hydrant and some additional two-inch line, which they will own and maintain. And then sewer extension will actually be part of our system that will be extended, and we'll own and maintain that. And my discussion with those that were interested in the question on this was that we would end up doing only one set of plans for and specifications for both the water and the sewer, but obviously, we'll need to coordinate the specifications for the different entities in that project. But again, that's actually another reason that West Consultants should be considered because they have done consulting work for Ikerd Township Water Corp., just as they have for Burke County.
I guess I want to be clear, who's going to send the bill and who's going to receive the payment from the customer?
We will, as we are the grantee of the grant coming from DCA. We'll be the ones that'll be approving the bills and sending those out for the contractors' payment and for the engineering and administrative consultants.
I understood that. I'm talking about the water customer themselves.
Oh, that, again, that will be Ikerd Water. I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. Ikerd Water will be sending the bills out for the water since it will be an extension to their system. We will be sending out the bills for the sewer customers.
Anything else? All right. You've heard the presentation, and you've heard the recommendation. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, that takes two motions. A motion to authorize the county manager and/or county attorney to negotiate a contract with the recommended firm, which is Western Associates, and a motion to authorize the county manager to execute agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review and/or revision by the county attorney.
Thank you, Maynard. You've heard the motion. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hands. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Carson.
Thank you.
Our next item is the commission appointments to boards and committees for 2014. Madam Clerk, have you provided a list of those?
They're in your agenda packet.
All right. Again.
Page 301.
Got it. All right. Is everybody happy with the committees that you have? Anybody want any new volunteering for new committees?
Mr. Chairman, we asked during the pre-agenda if anybody had a request for change to notify the Madam Clerk, and nobody...
Nobody.
I guess everybody's happy.
Okay. If that be true, pleasure of the board on this one. Take a motion.
Take a motion to keep the appointments the same.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous again, Madam Clerk. Move us to section number 12, our reports and comments. I think, okay, JR, I'm going to start with you tonight.
I just wanted to thank the board for the faith they've shown in me for the work I've done, and I will continue to do you a good job. Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. 2013 has been busy. I will be doing a report to the board in January of the summary of accomplishments for 2013. I think you may have seen in the newspaper today where we had a meeting with all the chiefs of police in Burke County, as well as the District First Sergeant of the State Highway Patrol and the sheriff regarding our efforts and desires to implement video probable cause and video arraignment here in Burke County to make the operations more efficient, effective, and safe for our officers and get officers back out on the street more quickly than they are under the current process. But thank you again. I look forward to 2014.
Thank you, Sheriff Wayne.
And I just thank all of you. I think we all worked together well this year, and thank Brian for his projects that he was undertaking and really moved forward on these projects. And I would just wish to our citizens a very Merry Christmas and hope that things, again, you know, we suffered here in Burke County. We have a lot of homeless and a lot of people without food, but I hope that changes. And if anybody's got a little extra money, maybe give a little bit to charity this year.
Thank you. Jeff? No comment. Zach?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment that I want to congratulate you on. Maynard, on your appointment, we have a lot of work to do in the coming years, so you did a good job in your position previously, and I just hope we work together and continue that going down the road for 2014. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. In the condition that we're in, it's hard times, but Santa Claus is always good to us, so Merry Christmas to all of you.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just wanted to congratulate you on your appointments, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and announce that county offices will be closed on Wednesday, January 28.
that county offices will be closed on Wednesday, January 1, in observance of the New Year's Day holiday, and on January 20, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Going to stay open Christmas, I guess, right? Maynard?
Well, you know, I talked to Santa Claus, and he said, "All you guys were just really good guys last year, and you deserve something of appreciation of being good and nice guys." So... He delivered you some presents, this is candy.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Maynard.
And the other comments I wanted to make is, especially for JR and Ball and Janie, and very special for Kay and Brian, it's, it's been a pleasure. Y'all made being cheerperson a much easier job than being out there on your own. And then to our citizens, I hope they have a very safe Christmas, a Merry Christmas, and good health for next year. And I wish you Buck Owens' song. I hope you get one of everything you got, that guy. I hope your basket is well-filled and that Christmas with you and your family is great and healthy. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand and join me in appreciation for Maynard Taylor for his service for the county last year?
Thank you very much.
Well, it's, it's been quite a night for us, and I want to thank each and one of, every one of you for your confidence in me to, to take the county commission down the road wherever it's going to lead in 2014. I am so proud to be associated with a group of men and women that I've been associated with in 2013. It's been a pleasure. We have accomplished more, and I think the county manager's reports will justify what we have done, and I'm very proud of that. Jeff and I were talking a little bit earlier, there's just, everybody's just been kind of happy this year, even though it's been a downtime for the economy, the board has done good work. And again, I appreciate you placing that confidence in me to lead us down in 2014. To my friend Troy, who I've known for more than 30 years, good luck to you, my friend. We've, we've had a good road together, and it's been a lot of fun, so enjoy your retirement and to you and your family. To the citizens of Burke County, this board will pledge to you that it will do what is right for this county. We're on a good road from the leadership of Maynard, we'll continue on with that leadership. And we wish all of you Merry Christmas and, and a Happy New Year. Do we have a need for close session?
Yes.
Just a moment, please. Put my glasses back on. Let's do the vacancy announcements before we go to close session, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Currently, we have a vacancy on the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, eight vacancies on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. We now have one vacancy on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, one vacancy on the Council of Aging, one vacancy on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have applications are being accepted for five regular members and two alternates on the Board of Equalization and Review. We took care of the Region E Development Corporation, we took care of the Planning Board. The city of Morganton Board of Adjustment E T J has one vacancy. We took care of all of the Board of Health. We do still need a Morganton city resident, I believe, for the Library Board of Trustees. We're good on the tourism. We still have a vacancy for the Consumer Family Advisory Committee, family member of a consumer representing mental health on the Partners Behavioral Health Management Board. The term is for three years. Be happy to speak with anyone about these vacancies. Just give me a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to ask the citizens of Burke County, there's a lot of, a lot of committees here and councils that you can come out and do some work on, so I would encourage you to put your application in, get with Kay, and do what you can for Burke County on these committees. To preserve the attorney-client privilege and discuss threatened or pending litigation, discuss executive development matters, and to discuss personnel matters as authorized by the North Line General Statute 143-318118, 3, 4, and 6, I'll take a motion to go into close session.
No moves.
Alright, we'll take a five-minute break before we go into close session. Anybody to be invited to close session tonight, Kay?
Need to vote on it. Need to vote on it. Vote on the motion.
Is anybody to be invited to close session? Okay. All in favor of close session? Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Take a five-minute break.
Suzette Kama, on Sunday, the date was December 24, 1955, when Diane, Peggy, Kathy, and Janet Lennon became overnight sensations on the Lawrence Welk Show. The date in Morganton is Sunday, January 19, for a 3:00 P. M. matinee. See the Lennon Sisters at Kama on Sunday, January 19, 3:00 P. M. I know you're going to love it.
We're now back in open session. There will be no action due to close session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Wayne. All in favor, say let's go home.
Go home.